He's the author of the forthcoming book Anxiety Coach, which is out this spring. And he joins us now to talk about how to lower holiday anxiety for kids. Stephen, welcome.
Thank you for having me.
So Stephen, how can you tell if a child is having anxiety issues? If they don't have the skills to kind of verbalize it or recognize it and tell you about it?
The best way to tell if a child is feeling overly anxious is probably by their behavior. So if they are resistant, reluctant, avoiding to do things, getting together with friends or cousins or family members, things that would seem to be fun, they're resistant, very quiet, withdrawn, maybe tearful, maybe suddenly get irritated when you request them to do something pretty straightforward.
Okay. And then there are different kinds of anxiety. You know, I think there's kind of the run-of-the-mill anxiety, like feeling a little nervous, say, I don't know, before a piano recital, to more significant and frequent anxiety that shows up in everyday life and can really interfere with it. I wonder if you can explain to us what sorts of anxieties are kind of regular? And when that behavior maybe rises to actually be a disorder?
The first way we try to answer that is we try to separate what we refer to as an anxiety disorder or a problem with anxiety from stress. We all feel anxious, nervous and worried sometimes. And if it's a situation that would make most people feel anxious, we call that stress. So with the holidays, it's fun, but you're doing so many things and you're trying to get as much done. And you've got such high expectations for how wonderful everything should be. That causes stress in most people. Or a piano recital or activities like that. But for some kids, they get much more nervous and worried than we would expect. So meeting new kids makes them so anxious that they're afraid they'll say something wrong. So they avoid the situations and don't talk. So it's being more afraid than most people would expect. And also being more afraid regularly enough that it gets in the way and causes problems.
And what can a parent do? You know, when is it at a point that you maybe should get some help for your child?
That's a really important point is that we want to make sure that all parents know that anxiety disorders in kids are very common and also very treatable. And there's nothing wrong with being anxious. The world is full of anxious people who their anxiety helps them be conscientious and be kind and hard work and prepare for things. But when anxiety begins stopping kids from doing the things they want to do or need to do, or makes just everyday life very distressing, that's when it's time to seek help. And when parents are kind of first responding to anxiety, how they respond depends on what their goals are. If the goal is, we just need to get through this situation. We need to get through this holiday. We need to get through this as well as possible. Then do everything you can to help your child through the situation. Remain calm, remain warm and supportive. Try to break things down, allow them to do things differently or avoid things. But if our goal is to help a child feel less anxious going forward so that anxiety is less of a problem, the most important part of treatment is something called exposure therapy, helping kids gradually face their fears and build their confidence through learning, through their own experience, that what they're afraid of was didn't happen, and that they were able to handle feeling anxious and doing things that were challenging.
So I wonder if you can give us some quick tips? Maybe just some little ways around the holidays to reduce anxiety if we feel our children are overly anxious?
Yeah. So one thing we can do is try to anticipate what situations are going to make our kids nervous. I was always sort of a shy, quiet kid myself. And I can still remember just the dread of having to make phone calls to extended family members to talk about the holidays, thank them for the Christmas presents. And I just felt so nervous doing it. And then I kind of blamed myself, why am I feeling so nervous? So if parents can kind of realize, well, you know what? I bet seeing the cousins and going over to Aunt and Uncle's house is going to be challenging. Let's try to help make that a little bit easier by having a scheduled board game to play or something to do to kind of break the ice. So anticipation, just lowering expectations, realizing everything doesn't have to go perfect. We can have some bumps in the road and ups and downs. Having some nice structure, having kids know what to anticipate. And having breaks, having some downtime. If you're stressed out, nervous, even though while you're doing a fun activity, it's really helpful to have some time just to veg out and collect yourself on your own.
I love that advice. That's, I think, useful for all of us around the holidays. I also appreciate it in your work. You know, just simple things like get fresh air and exercise and eat well and get enough sleep. I mean, I think obviously all these things contribute. Stephen Whiteside is a clinical psychologist and director of the Pediatric Anxiety Disorders Program at the Mayo Clinic. And he's the author of the forthcoming book Anxiety Coach. Stephen, thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Happy holidays.
To you too.
heed the advice, folks. Take time to chill out. Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Deepa Fernandez in Alameda, California.
And I'm Scott Tong in Washington DC. It's Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from WBUR Boston and from BetterHelp, committed to supporting mental health through therapy. Clients are matched with one of 25,000 therapists and can communicate via video, chat or phone.
The December 18th, 2023 City Council Meeting is hereby called to order. And I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, if she would please call the room.
Mr. Volason?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Pretty?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. White Boyd?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And of course, Ms. President. Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. And is Mr. Hardy, Elder Hardy here? I don't see him. All right, I'll pinch hit for him then. And then we'll go right into the pledge of allegiance after the invitation. And we're pleased to see our former council member, Anita James Price, in the audience today. Good to see you. Let's pray. In turn, God, our Father, it is in your name, in the name of Jesus, that we come, thanking you for this day that you've given us. And Lord, we ask your blessings as we, as a governing body, go about doing the business of this city and the valley. And we thank you for all the many wonderful things you've provided us. And Lord, we ask that everybody remember that you are the reason for this season. And we ask you to guide and direct us as we go forward. It is in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everybody, to the first of our two sessions on this day. And we welcome you, and not only those that are here in the chamber, but those of you who are watching on RV TV. The City Council of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council-appointed authorities, boards, commissions and committees. Please access the city's website at www.roanokeva.gov to complete an online application. And we encourage any of you to apply for positions on various boards that we have and committees. They're all important. And we want our citizens to be a part of governing as we go forward in this seventh-time all-American city. So please feel free to do that. The clerk's office will help you to fill out the application. It's not a complex process. And so we're asking for your willingness to step up and be a part of that. All right. So we'll move on now into Agenda Item Number Two. The first item we have up is the presentations and acknowledgements we have on today. And then Item Number Three is the Hearing of Citizens Upon Public Matters. City Council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters, now, all matters will be referred to the city manager for a response or recommendation or report to council as he may deem appropriate. And so I'm going to ask clerk if we have any speakers that have signed up today.
I do not have a list right now. No, I do not have any.
No speakers?
You were registered? Okay. Well, let me walk out to the door and see if Ruth has any. She hasn't brought any in.
Okay. We'll pause for you to do that.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we do have two speakers. The first speaker is Brian McConnell.
Welcome, Mrs. McConnell.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. Wish you the joy of the holiday season. Not always easy to find this time of year. I think for most of us, we're busy. I'm presenting on an update of the Anathema article. I was before you last, about two months ago, maybe a little less than two months ago. I'm just curious, in my sharing of the publication of that article, how many of you, just by a show of hands, might have had an opportunity to review it? Have any familiarity with it? Which is, I see no hands, just for, with the exception of Councilmember Cobb. Thank you, Joe. Kind of what's at the foundation of my being before you again is a citizen's concern for the citizenry's overall health, happiness and well-being. And the role that governance and in turn leadership, really a responsibility, I view it as responsibility, holds in a relational way to its constituents. And this is at the local level. In the context of the Anathema article, it's really primarily about, it starts with the mental health of our youth. And the fact that the second-leading cause of death for 10- to 14-year-olds is suicide at the moment. I'm in the process of returning basically to the workforce, even though I've been retired for some years. Working in the capacity in relation to ESS is your third-party vendor for the Roanoke City School District. And that's been an interesting exercise in part because my background, again, as the Anathema article reflects, covers about the last 30 years and my personal narrative in that regard. So I'm highly qualified. Back in the day, we used to refer to individuals like myself sometimes as being overqualified. I guess that's the extent of my attention-seeking. And kind of, I so appreciate my longtime acquaintance with Councilmember Cobb, because we've labored together in various, in varying different capacities in terms of community engagement and community advocacy. And from my perspective, that's quite frankly, if there is a solution, if there's a resolution to the chaos and the madness, that, I, my concern is going into this next year. I mean, I have a recent, very strong background, really in the science of politics and governance. And what doesn't work is a machine and cogs in the machine going through the motions when that machine is not necessarily working for change. And yet what is needed is change. Thanks for your attention. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is George Ramey. I don't believe he's here.
Does she just sound outside or?
I'm not sure on this one.
Okay. All right, well, we'll move on as she comes. We'll maybe at some point give her a chance to say something. All right, we move on now to our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the members of City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I need a motion on the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the room?
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the consent agenda is approved. Thank you. All right, next item, as we move into now our regular agenda. We have no public hearings, petitions and communications. Item 61, Land Bank Progress Report. Angela S. Penn, Senior Vice President of Real Estate Development and Energy Conservation and Housing Rehabilitation, Total Action for Progress. This is sponsored by Vice Mayor Cobb and Councilmember Moon Reynolds. And I'm going to call on Angela. She's already here. Angela, good to see you. And we give you 10 minutes if you need them or a little more if you need that.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Mayor Lee, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to come and share some of the progress of the land bank. There was a PowerPoint presentation.
Is it already there? Is it there, Bob? I'll talk to Cece if it's not there.
Okay, that's okay. I'll continue on.
I can get it for you.
Okay.
Just go.
I'll just go on. All right, so we'll just proceed with the report. Just for a reminder, for those who may not know, the land bank, its primary purpose is to acquire properties that some may call blighted and to temporarily hold and take care of those properties until they can be transferred to new and responsible owners. The City of Roanoke engaged in the process of land banks in 2019 with a MOU to Total Action for Progress in 2021 and an amendment to that MOU in June of 2023, when there was a change in the Code of Virginia 58.1-3970.1. So just want to share, the City of Roanoke provided our agency with $570,000 approximately in its capacity as the land bank. Those funds were allocated through the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds under the American Rescue Act. And so our goal at that time was to acquire 16 properties by the grant's conclusion, which is coming up on December 1st, 2024. To date, there have been 13 properties acquired and three are currently under contract. And so we are pleased that we have been able to utilize those resources for those acquisitions. One of the things that I did have a status report for you on those properties, working with the various housing developers in the community. I'm pleased to say that there have been some homeowners as a result of those properties being acquired. There are houses in process of development as a result of those acquisitions. And we have one that is coming up that hopefully will result in 10 affordable housing units in the next year. So we're pleased to see that those housing developers are able to utilize those properties and make a difference in our community. The next area I'd like to share with you is that of that budget of $570,000, $685,000, we have used $449,113 and have remaining $121,571. So those funds have been put to good use and we are expending those resources that you have provided to us. The other area that I'd like to share with you is that we have been working and I've had the opportunity to attend meetings with code enforcement, the treasurer's office, as well as the city attorney's office, and looking at properties within the community that have a substantial amount of delinquent taxes or either have concerns from a code enforcement perspective, and to look at how we might move those through the process. One of the properties we have been able to, the special commissioner has filed for just last week, has filed a petition for a piece of property that hopefully will then be transferred to the land bank that would then be duly advertised and developers may apply to get that parcel to return it back to active use. The parcel is currently vacant at this time and would be a wonderful place for a new home to be developed and built. And just another note about land banks, there are some 300 land banks across the country. There are four within the Commonwealth of Virginia, Roanoke being one of those. And they are moving forward and seeing some great strides in removing some blighted properties. I have had a few questions regarding what land banks are doing across the country in terms of how are they sustaining themselves? And so I just wanted to share with you a couple of the ways that some land banks are sustaining themselves in addition to the funds that you have provided. Some receive general allocations through the budget. There are some, as we are currently doing now, have inventory provided to them through the use of the special commissioner, having that property transferred to them. And then there are some that use another method called tax recapture, where a percentage of those tax revenues that come back to the locality for properties that have been turned, returned to the tax roll as active, a certain percentage comes back to the land bank in order to replenish their funds so that they can continue with that work. So I just wanted to share that as well. I'm sorry that our PowerPoint isn't up for you to see some of the pictures of some of the things that the housing providers have been able to do with the properties. But they have been able to stabilize some of them. They have been able to stabilize some of those properties by clearing them. They've also been able to build some new developments. And you'll see an example of a homeownership opportunity there in your packet. So we are very thankful for the resources that you have provided to us to assist those housing providers. It has allowed them to extend those resources already provided through community development block grant or home funds. They are now able to take those resources and use them for their building rather than having to use them for acquisition. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding the current status of the land bank.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Penn, for that overview. One of the questions you did answer, which was, I was looking at the ideas for how to sustain. And you mentioned in the Commonwealth, there were four land banks. And you shared some information on some of the sustainabilitys. But I wasn't sure if I heard what we are doing to sustain sustainability on the land bank, on these properties, to keep the land bank going forward.
So currently, the allocation that you've provided of the $570,000, $685,000 is the total of the current resources that we have. In addition, we have moved forward to utilizing the special commissioner that can then have properties go directly to the land bank as opposed to having to compete at public auction for those properties and expending those resources. So currently, those are the two methods right now that we are using as a locality.
Right. And that came from what you had here, where you used up to $364,000.
For, we've, yes.
Which we still have a balance of about, I guess you'd say about close to $21,000.
$121,000, yes.
I guess, okay. And the other question I have is, and you may have answered it and I just missed it. How are the other land banks sustaining their land banks in itself?
They are using a combination of budgeting allocations. Some receive direct allocations from the locality. I did find an example in Savannah, Georgia, where they created the Savannah Affordable Housing Fund. So they've created a fund with which to continue the resources going to the land bank to acquire derelict properties.
What are we doing in the Commonwealth? I believe you said there was four land banks. So what are they doing in sustaining themselves?
So the largest, which of course is the Maggie Walker Land Bank and Land Trust, they received those direct allocations.
And where's that one at?
In Richmond.
Richmond, okay.
So it is the largest of the land banks. The others are about our size or smaller. And some are just actually starting. So they have a little bit more in terms of their longevity and moving forward with what they're doing. But they work with various localities. they're doing, but they work with various localities, not only in the city of Richmond, but surrounding jurisdictions where they are receiving those properties directly into their, their inventory.
Is that something we will be looking at?
That is one of the.
Are we doing that now?
That is one of the things that we have just started, and our initial case just was filed last week, and so we are hoping that with this case, that would be a good model for us to move forward.
Okay. And then my other question is, the percentage of income that we are getting from these properties for owner occupied, do you have any kind of percentage that, other than what we're getting from the special commissioner, what does our percentage take coming back into, or is it just too early to tell?
I don't have that data yet.
Okay, okay. And then how about the average cost for demolishing those blighted properties?
Yes. So in our budget, you'll note there that we averaged about $15,000 per demolition. Across the country, the average is about 18,000. That depends upon the size of the house. So if you have about a 1,500 square foot dwelling, it's anywhere between 12,000 to 15,000 to demolish, so starting at about $8 to $10 a square foot.
Because I see where we have budgeted to 6,000, but we haven't used any as of yet.
That is correct. We have not had to use any of that. We are in conversations with some of the housing developers that may need to utilize that resource.
Okay. And then, and you mentioned here, I saw where you had identified some properties that were delinquent, and I saw where the most of them you have here, I believe is in, I guess, southeast and a little couple of downtown, and then you have some on Gilmore. But I don't see any in the inner city where there's a lot of blighted properties, vacant properties, boarded up properties. Are we looking at any of those, such as in the Melrose, the Melrose Orange Target area where the city was in there last year for five years? And I still see properties that are there, overgrowth, vacant lots, et cetera. Are we looking at trying to buy up any of those to turn back onto the tax record?
Okay. Thank you so much for that question. So the reason why you see the majority of the properties that were identified in southeast, because when we received those initial funds, we were targeting southeast to go along with the target area where those funds were going for community development block grant. Since that time, I've had the opportunity to meet with Chris Chittam, and we have been expanded to several census tracts that pretty much includes all of northwest, and includes some portions of southwest, southeast, and some portions of northeast. So our territory has been expanded for us to utilize those funds in those other areas.
So when you mentioned southwest, are you looking at upper southwest, between 10th, Salem Avenue, Roy Avenue? When you mentioned southwest, is that the area you're talking about?
The current property that we have in southeast that we're targeting is Mountain Avenue.
Not up above into Hurt Park?
Hurt Park would, yes.
Yes, definitely. Yes, okay. So you will be just looking at them, but you haven't done anything as of yet?
We have a listing that we will be providing to the city attorney's office for review under the special commissioner to see if they would qualify in order to be considered to transfer over to the land bank.
And if they qualify, what is your timeline?
And I, that is a little bit harder to project. We're seeing how things go with this first case, honestly, to see how long it's taking us, and then I'll be able to provide a better answer with more concrete timeframe.
Okay, well, we'll look for another update on that then. I appreciate it. I think that's it. Let me make sure before I tell the mayor. Yes, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Trish Rayburn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Penn. This has been a long time coming. We're so excited just to even hear the report. And I have a couple of questions, but I just want to ask you, based on the measures that we've taken and the work that we've done with TAP and the city attorney's office, how do you feel that the land bank is going? Do you feel like we are on the right path, or things are going well, or we need to make some tweaks or modifications somehow?
I think we're on a good path. It took us a little while to get here with some of the adjustments that needed to be made, but I think we are on a good path. We have a very good working relationship. I am so pleased that city staff, city attorney's office has welcomed me to come to the meetings so that we can collaborate and look at properties that are identified as areas of concern by code enforcement and understanding from the city treasurer's office, those properties that have substantial amount of delinquent taxes.
Well, that's really good to hear. Is there anything that we can do as a council, or you think we're just, we just need to wait and see now to see how things are going to go?
I think the other thing that we need to look at on the horizon is once these resources are finished, that came under the ARPA funding, we need to look at what mechanisms could be put in place to have some longevity and sustainability of the land bank over time.
As far as funding?
Yes.
Exactly. Okay. And do you think that, you know, there might be some grants or something that we can apply for on our side, or are you all, I'm sure, on your side?
I think we should definitely come to the table and discuss all of that, and we'd be more than willing to see what resources we could find as well.
Let me ask you this question. Is there a limit, or is there an amount that you determine at the properties, once they go on the list, if it's, if it's tenable or not, if it's, if you can, I guess, revitalize it, or if it's going to cost too much money, and then you just demolish them? Is there a threshold?
We look at them case by case.
Case by case, sure.
To see what actually is going on with the structure. There are some housing developers that utilize tax credits, and if the property is in really bad condition, they get a little bit more in terms of their tax credit. So they are able to utilize properties that are in poor condition, so.
That way? Oh, okay, good. And so I know at first we were in the, you know, in the target area, but you're not going to use that as a baseline now. You're just going to find whatever property comes available or comes on the list that you think we can take advantage of. That's how you, you guys are going to.
Yes.
Decide which property to use.
That is how we're going to move forward, yes.
Well, thank you so much. I just appreciate it. I'm just looking forward to your next update, because I know it's still brand new, you're still trying to figure it out and how this is all working out, but the things that you all have accomplished so far have been amazing. So thank you for all your hard work on this. I know it did take a long time, but I'm glad we're where we are now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it has been a bit of getting up to speed, but I am glad to see that we have roughly 16 properties that are already in this land bank and already being used for homeownership and affordable housing. That's what we're here for. I wanted to ask, have you, has TAP requested anything in the next fiscal year budget for the land bank?
We are, the applications that just came out, we are looking at how we can submit an application under the acquisition area for community development block grants.
Okay. And then I was actually going to ask, this is more for Mr. Spencer, I'm sorry, if you could maybe give us a little update on the case and like how, how that may work?
It's been filed with court. We'll get a court order, they'll transfer it straight over. One of the intriguing things, though, that I also would like to talk with staff about is she mentioned about tax recapture. Currently, these properties tend to be, the reason that they're going to tax sale is we aren't receiving tax revenue. However, with the rehabbing and improvements to the property that then generate, if you will, almost like new revenue, if we can recapture that and work about how that works and how long, a percentage of those new taxes that we're now receiving can go back and help fund the, the land bank. We can continue to grow and grow. But I think that's only one stream, but I look forward to working with Ms. Penn and the city manager as we look at tax recapture.
Yeah, I think that tax recapture is a great way of doing it. I think it would be a question of, you know, percentage and all that. It's a great, a great way to keep things funded. I think that's all the questions I have. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Brady?
I didn't know if you were going to get on the line. How do you want to start? Thank you, Angela, for the presentation, and thank you to the city attorney for covering that. That was going to be one of the aspects I was going to bring up. I was asked about, what are the challenges that you see with this system going through the special commissioner in order to obtain these properties? And this is going to be the first property that the test case will be going through soon. Senator Edwards carried this legislation when it came through the General Assembly, and originally had a threshold of only 10% of delinquent taxes or fees that the property's assessed value had to meet in order for that property to be considered. But the law that went through near unanimously in the General Assembly ended up being amended by our governor and raised to a threshold of 25%. And whether or not you have these numbers, or the city attorney might be aware, how many properties do we really have that are close to reaching that kind of delinquency in their, in their taxes? Because if you look at a basic derelict piece of property that's vacant, has a low property value, with a 10% threshold, they would have to be delinquent for probably at least four years before that property be considered. And now that it's at 25%, that property's probably close to a decade or more worth of delinquent taxes or fees before we can really start to consider taking ownership of it. And then are there some negative concerns regarding the, how the land has to either be sold, or if it's not sold, the surplus that has to be returned to the rightful owner, and how that might cut into any revenues going forward that might be otherwise realized by this program? There's a lot to unfold.
Yeah, so I'll just take the first part. And so looking at that section, it does call for that 25%, but currently, the city of Roanoke, there is an allowance by the Department of Housing and Community Development under their fiscal stress index. If a locality is over the score 100, then those numbers and percentages go down to 20 and 10% respectively.
Thank you. So that should help with acquiring those at least a little bit quicker.
Yes. And then your second part to that question, and I will, because we haven't actually stepped all the way through this yet, but the city attorney's office provided us with an example or a formula relative to making sure that the owner is made whole. And so the example that was provided is that, say there is a parcel that comes to us through the special commissioner, if there were 10,000 in delinquent taxes, 10,000 to satisfy legal costs, and 20,000 to satisfy creditors, then, you know, there would be 50,000 if the property were assessed at that. That is, would be the starting point. So we wouldn't start at a place of the value of the improvements. You would start at the assessed value before any improvements. So the example was that if the property had been developed and it were later sold for 150,000, then you're just looking at that 50,000 as the threshold, and then the remaining would go to, in the event of legal costs, creditor liens that exceeded 50,000, there would be no surplus remaining, and the entity that developed the property would be able to utilize the additional 100,000 to cover those expenses.
Thank you. The points that I'd like to pull from there, one that the property owners who do have it, no land is being taken from them. They are being rightfully compensated.
Yes.
Through this system. And secondly, once we go through this test case and we have a better accounting of where all these properties stand, I know that Councilmember Moon had brought up a number of properties that she has a concern about, once we have a better accounting of what properties may be derelict versus which ones are delinquent, I hope that we can go back to the General Assembly and maybe with a future governor, seek lowering that threshold in order to allow more of these properties to be available, to be used by the land bank going forward. Those are all my comments. Mr. Mayor?
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thanks, Angela. This is a really helpful report. Do you have some pictures you wanted to show us?
Sure.
I'd love to see some of the progress you all are making.
So this is a before and a current picture of 705 Church Street. You can see before the property was pretty overrun, and this is what we call stabilization. The housing developer has gone in, moved the brush and other things, and now you can clearly see across that property. And it, of course, for the neighbors, is not as much as an eyesore that it previously had been. There are no places to hide on this property as well, so.
I'm glad you mentioned that there was a house behind that. I was trying to figure it. The bush, the bushes there, there's a house behind that.
There was a former house there at one point. I don't know when it ceased to be in a house, but the property just became overrun. The next example that we have is a property on Eighth Street, and you can see before, it just was a vacant boarded up structure. The housing developer is now in the process of working and rehabilitating that house for homeownership. And then on Bullet Avenue, you'll see this is a newly constructed home. You can see in progress, and then you can see the final picture there of the current house that is there now with a new family residing in that home, so.
Thank you. Can you share, I don't know if you can share this or not, but who some of the partners are with the land bank?
Yes, some of the housing developers that we have been working with are Habitat for Humanity, Restoration Housing, as well as Community Housing Partners.
And of the list that you showed in the document, but I think also up here, you go through, and this is very helpful, kind of where you are in the, in the stages of development for each of these properties. How many of these properties currently are just land, and how many are rehabilitating houses? Do you know that?
So there are, just looking very quickly, rehab, rehab, three. I believe there are, if I'm not mistaken, and I'll double check this, I believe there are six that are being rehabilitated, but I will double check to make sure I have that correct for you.
So seven are new builds, or the potential for new builds?
Yes.
Okay, that's a nice balance. There's one other question I was going to, oh. This is more of a communication celebration side of it. I think the general public isn't really aware of how important and vital the land bank is in partnership with some of our other agencies. Is there a way to make sure, whether it's, I know TAP's the lead on this, but I'm hoping that in collaboration with the city, that we can let the community know that these 13 properties, that some have already been developed, some have new homeowners? I think when Habitat does their celebration, you know, it's Habitat's build, but how did they get the land? I mean, that's the piece that I would love to help connect.
Okay.
In the city, so that the general public can hear, because we have a land bank, it made this possible, and it made this possible through all of these partnerships. That's what we do really well as a city, and I think we should just celebrate that. So if there's a way to do that on a regular basis, because these, to have 13 properties and three more coming up in the new year, with, that's such a great investment of that 500,000, and I agree with you, and the questions have been asked about how we sustain that, and it's probably going to be a combination of not only general budget, but those transferable properties, and then the thing that you mentioned about the percentage of tax revenues from the tax roll coming back.
Yes.
I think those are all beneficial.
Thank you. We will definitely follow up on that and making sure that the community is aware. We work with some great partners who have shared how much this has meant to them and their ability to do what they do and not having to worry about the acquisition. So thank you very much for providing that. So thank you very much for providing that resource.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Angela. We appreciate the work that you all are doing over there on this. Oh, I looked down at several times, Ms. Sanchez.
Sorry, ma'am. Ms. Penn, thank you for your nicely detailed report, but my question is, are people able to donate to the land bank if they wish to do so?
Yes, we do accept donations. They can donate property parcels. They can contact us, we'll take a look at them, and be happy to sit down to talk with them about acquiring their property.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, just a comment, and then I'm done. Since we've all spoken, and I did mention wanting an update, I would ask if we could, just to put it on the calendar, then to wait, and then ask for the update, that perhaps six months out, is that reasonable?
Yes.
To have you to come back and give us an update?
Okay.
So we'll look maybe in June?
Okay.
If that's all right with the council, to have her to come back. Does that sound okay?
It's okay with you.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you for the invitation. Thank you.
All right, we'll look for you in June of 2024. Thank you.
All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move now down to, or up to item seven, which is a report of city officers and comments of city manager, and 701 is city manager briefings. And under that item is FY '24 budget and the November monthly budget report. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be with you all this afternoon. Go ahead, and Angela will let me exit hers. I think I'll start at the end instead of the beginning and basically say that, you know, based, this is a report after the first five months of the fiscal year, and the information we've provided you in the past still pretty much holds. We are on target, we are, our revenues are holding well, our expenditures are under control. I'd like to spend a minute or two to give you some of those details, but sometimes when you're reporting financial information, people are waiting, are we okay? Yes, Roanoke City is okay, better than okay. If I could, go into the local taxes and the revenue summary real quick. Once again, our real estate, as you see, is running a little above our targeted amount, which is to be expected when you see the information. And I would like to stop maybe for a second so I don't forget, and Mr. Cowell may remind you, but we are planning a more extensive revenue work session with the board and presentation on current year and next year's preliminary projected revenue estimates, at the same time the real estate presentation is made in January. So some of these will be much more talked about and a little more information on it then. As we go down, personal property tax still, once again, is not, is collected in the spring, it's just proration amounts as we go through. You've heard us talk about the public service tax. We finally got the dates that we were looking for and everything. That billing has been made, it's just not reflected as a receipt yet, but that was made here in December, and I would fully expect for that to be remitted by the January reporting period. The only thing that if you're looking at what's a little light right now, it's kind of a mixed bag. It's our penalties and interest related to real estate and personal property. You know, we have a budget for that. I would like to think, if we're a little light there, that people are able to pay their bills a little quicker and maybe not incur some of these penalties and such, so that's nothing that concerns us yet, running a little light on that. And then the other ones, the other local taxes, sales tax continues to run on target. As we look down through the list in the middle, you see the business and occupational license. Once again, we collect that in spring of '24, so it's just the subsidiary activity that goes on prior to that billing and collection date. Transient occupancy still is very strong in the city. As you go down the list a little further, the prepared foods and beverages, once again, that is, you see 36%, but that is a month or so behind in collection, so we're right on target with that one. So just a quick comment, knowing that you have a full reporting coming to you soon. Can I answer any questions regarding our local taxes and what we see in the future? Well, we'll tell you the future in January. Look at the non-local taxes. Permits, fees, and licenses continues to run very strong. As you recall, we had some fee increases in that category this past year after a very long period of holding those constant. Once again, our revenue from use of money and property continues to be very strong. We're almost at 100% of budget currently, so that is just money we'll report to you on a regular basis for the current year. The only area I think that we're beginning to investigate a little bit is in the charges for services. Both Civic Center and some of our EMSDs are running a little light, nothing after five months to be concerned about, but that's probably the only category that has perked our interest a little bit at this part of the year. Once again, as we go down to some miscellaneous and whatnot, puts us at still a comfortable margin where we think we will end this year with a slight surplus, very early in that year, so it is preliminary projection. So we feel good with where the economy's going locally and kind of where our book's set today. Any questions before I move over quickly to the expenditure side? And again, I think, you know, we'll visit with the council very much, and often go in in the next several months on some of these expenditures, but in the current year, we continue to consider our expenditures under control. Interest, inflation continues to be a worry for us as we work through some of those areas. There was one, as you'll see, the only one that really looks a little out of high for its percentage is the public safety. Well, there's two areas. Public safety, as we increased salaries last year, at our, that was our objective, that has generated some additional overtime that we knew would do, and we know that we're already a little high on overtime, looking into that as well. And then the, in public works, 59%, that is still, we indicated that that's paving. They did because of additional funds this year received by the council during the budget year last year. They actually went at some of the paving earlier this year, so that further explains why that's a little high. As you get through the winter and into the spring, that will normalize into a regular sort of amortization for their expenditures. So without me getting too much in depth, before we get into budget discussions for next year, I'll stop and see if there are any questions.
No, I'd just like to hear the word surplus a lot more.
Well, I'll use that responsibly, but as often as I can.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we'll now move to items recommended for action. 701A is the acceptance of the DTC grant funds for the Go Outside Festival. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of funding by the Virginia Tourism Commission to the city of Roanoke for marketing and production of the Go Outside Festival, authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute any documents necessary to receive such funding and to take such further actions and execute such other documents as may be necessary to obtain, accept, implement, administer, and use such funds.
Why, did there any discussion among members of council?
Just have a question.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Thank you. This is the second year. Was the funding that was given last year from the Virginia Tourism Commission, was it $20,000 as well?
Yes.
It was the same amount?
Yeah, I don't know if it's always said at that amount, but it was the same amount that came in this last time.
It is. And it's being given for the marketing and production, and I see where it's going to be free to the public. How do we generate a revenue from this if it's free to the public and they're giving that?
Yep.
So is it just from the vendors?
Yes, yes.
Or the exhibitors?
Vendors, and most of that is through beer sales, so yes, vendors.
This is the beer sales that we agreed to several months ago when you came and asked about getting, being, having permission to be able to go forward to sell beer.
Yeah, that was. Yeah, that was Carvin's Code. That's right. I was trying to remember which one that was.
No, I thought it was Go Fest, too. I thought it was one for Go Fest.
No, Go Fest is always...
Oh, Go Fest has always had it.
Yeah, we ran into, if you remember, a couple of years ago, there was an issue with us, and Salem had the same issue, where kind of who holds what license in order to be able to actually sell the beer. That actually limited last year what was able to be earned. That has been worked.
Okay, that's what I think I'm thinking of.
Yeah, I think somebody, Michael, might have given you an update on that piece of it, I think.
Okay, okay.
It was one that was on our legislative committee program, but we're not going to pursue it this year. We're going to seek something outside of it.
Yeah, there's still a legislative issue. Everybody's kind of developed somewhat workaround, but it's still not ideal.
Right. Okay, but thank you, sir.
Sure. And we did have, as you all know, of course, we did, Go Fest did have record attendance this past year, was the most, most that had ever attended the event in, was a great, was a great weekend, great weather, great, great events.
And when is it held?
In October.
October, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, I think you're ready to call it off.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. We now have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Is there a second?
Vivian got it. Or I could...
Could you read the title paragraph?
Yes. An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Tourism Corporation, amending and re-eradining certain sections of the 2023-2024 grant funds appropriation, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? Madam Clerk, please call it off.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number 701B is the acceptance of the FY 2023-2024 United Way Funding for the Bank of Roanoke Valley Program. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of funding by the city of Roanoke from the United Way of Roanoke Valley for program management and activities of the Bank on Roanoke Valley program, authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute any documents necessary to receive such funds and to take such further actions and execute such other documents as may be necessary to obtain, accept, implement, administer, and use such funds.
All right, thank you. Any discussion by members of council?
Yours, sir.
All right, Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Thank you. I believe I know the answer to this one. How long has Bank on Roanoke been in existence? I have about 17 years.
Yeah, Bank On's been for a while. We took this over, we've always been a part of Bank On. We took this over in 2018.
Right.
And it may not be quite that, quite that long, but at least five or six years prior to us.
Right, I believe it was under Chris Morrow.
Yeah.
When it came into existence, and I thought at that time United Way was running it.
It was. So when we, when we started up the Financial Empowerment Center, it became advantageous for them to contract with us just to be able to run the two programs together. The program is funded by predominantly financial institutions paying sort of membership due, if you will, joining it, and then those dollars are collected by United Way. The advantage of having United Way collect the dollars and contract is those are still through the 501(c)(3), so they're still tax deductible for those entities. And yet Chris was instrumental in establishing it, so it was at least 1015, probably approaching that timeframe.
And the other question is, I know it's Freedom First that we're using for the financial empowerment.
Yes, yes.
How are they measuring the outcome as to who they are able to reach, their outreach is for low-income people who needs to, you know, who's trying to learn how to open up a checking account, do a savings account?
There are both, so the Bank On program is an independent program from the Financial Empowerment Center, but both of those have a really in-depth list of outcomes and performance measures, because they're both national programs that are out there. And I can certainly, I can do two things. One is I can get you all kind of examples of those outcomes, and the other is, you know, we like to have Brandon come in like once a year or so and kind of update everyone on the Financial Empowerment Center, and we may want to do that again coming up.
Yeah, I think so, just to see how outreach is in inner city, are we reaching the masses that we are, you know, we set our sights on. I just would be curious.
Yeah, and, because I always feel like we have to say this with the Financial Empowerment Center, the majority of our clients certainly come from households that are on the lower-income side of things, but this service is actually available to all of our residents. Matter of fact, it's available to residents throughout the region, so it is not income-based, but certainly most of the folks that we serve tend to be those that are on the lower income. So yeah, I can, it'd probably be best to have Brandon come in and give an overview of both programs and the outcomes that are attached to those programs.
Yeah, because I know originally that's what Bank On was set up for, was trying to reach those low-income families, to help them to start learning how to save and be educated in financing.
Yeah, and Bank On is still very much that, so Bank On has kind of a, really a singular focus, which is get people into the mainstream banking programs.
Right.
So these are folks who do not have checking accounts, they use payday programs in those, so it's to get them into a, into a checking account, into a savings account, and alongside of that is some financial literacy. The Financial Empowerment Center, of course, takes and builds on that.
Right. I'd just be curious to see where they're at and how many we'll be, we'll reach. Thank you.
All right. Any more further discussion on that? Madam Clerk, I think we're ready to call it off.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. We have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to appropriate funding from the United Way of Roanoke Valley to transition program management from Bank on Roanoke Valley to the city to improve the financial stability of low-to-moderate-income residents, amending and re-eradining certain sections of the 2023-2024 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, thank you. Any discussion by members of council? I'd hear none. Call it off, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. All right, item C is the authorization for an encroachment permit for Greater Roanoke Transit Company, Valley Metro, for a bus shelter located at Blue Hills Drive at Blue Hills Circle in the right-of-way adjacent to property located at 1935 Blue Hills Drive Northeast. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance repealing ordinance number 42729-082123, adopted August 21, 2023, and allowing a bus shelter encroachment requested by the Greater Roanoke Transit Company doing business as Valley Metro into the public right-of-way adjacent to property located at 1935 Blue Hills Drive Northeast, bearing official tax map number 7240102, which bus shelter will be located within the right-of-way upon certain terms and conditions, and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council?
Mayor, I just have a quick question. And...
Mayor, I just have a quick question. And maybe Vice Mayor Cobb can answer it. Vice Mayor, do they have, I guess, a priority order or an order how they do the bus shelters? Or is it just they have them based on need or?
Bob, you might be able to help me with this too, but I know there's been a priority listing. There were, Bob, were there fifteen that were part of priority listing on major quarters, including Melrose?
Yes, and that was before the ARPA funding. So they've had federal funding for quite some time as a part of their program to build out shelters. And they tend to focus first on the heavy-use corridors. And then what they'll do, they prioritize it based on usage of the stop. So the more heavily used the stop is, the higher it is in priority. As you all know from previous discussions, that priority then is affected by how readily a shelter can actually be built. So there are certainly shelters out there. We all know one of them, we talk about regularly, that are very high priority. But there are, there are encumbrances or limitations as to being able to deliver it. But yes, they do have that. Now, I will say that it's, I would consider it sort of a running priority list because they reevaluate it regularly because the ridership changes. And so they'll kind of work off a list of fifteen or twenty, get those built, then they'll redo the list again as they kind of move their way through. But it's really focused on how heavily used a stop is as to the prioritization.
Would there ever be a goal to have a stop at each, each one, I mean, a shelter at each one of the stops?
Probably not, just because there are some that just practically you'll never be able to secure the land necessary. Because remember, all of these have to be accessible and ideally are connected to sidewalks also, which also limits with those. But no, I would not expect that you'll see shelters in all of them. I don't know that there's probably any bus system that actually has been.
That actually does that. And I was just in northeast over the weekend, and there was one, I mean, it's just on the road. It's not even a sidewalk there. And it was raining, and I thought, you know, wonder. And I just thought about it when, because it's on the agenda, but I was just wondering about that.
Yeah, and they're probably making, not probably, they are making better progress in putting more of these in than probably have been able to do in years.
Yeah. I've been seeing, I've been seeing them coming up. I was just wondering if was the ultimate goal was to have one at each stop or just?
No, just get as many as we can in those high priority areas as we work our way through those.
But thank you. I was just curious.
Sure.
Mr. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. I just want to piggyback on what Councilmember White Boyd just said with regards to the bus stops. One in particular, I believe, like, let's say for instance, on Eighth Street and Mormon Road, where you have right up against the embankment of the right-of-way. Will there ever be any way of putting a bench or anything in there or is it just because it's in the city's right-of-way? People just pass by, you caught in the rain, there is no shelter?
Yeah.
Is there anything such as on that?
Because there are, there are some things you can do that are short of a shelter, like a bench, for example. The bench itself still has to be ADA accessible.
Right.
Now, you don't have to have sidewalks coming to it, which seem somewhat obviously inconsistent. But what you do have to have is the pad that it's actually on, has to be able to accommodate someone that needs it for wheelchair accessibility. So yes, I mean, there are options that, we don't do those very often because by the time you go to all that trouble, it's probably easier just to build the shelter. But yeah, there aren't, you know, some of you may remember, there were, they might have done it here even. I mean, there were, a number of decades ago, there was an effort all across the country to install really advertiser-paid-for, a lot of were those concrete benches, if you remember seeing those in communities. And those were literally just plucked in the ground. That kind of program is no longer able to be put there because of the accessibility requirements that you've got to be able to accommodate those portions of it. But yeah, I mean, I think the preference is shelters, but certainly there are options to do something less if we can. One of the things we've talked about with Kevin is actually, I'm going to get the title just wrong, but sort of what I'm going to refer to as kind of a landing pad, which is maybe it's just a concrete pad where the bus stops so that at least when you get on and off the bus, you're not actually stepping into mud or those kinds of things. So that's another option that they have started to explore. And it's probably a lot easier to put in than, it's not ideal, but it's something better.
Especially in the inner city where most of your people who don't have, this is their only mode of transportation. And I picked that one because I come through Tenth Street a lot and Mormon. And I just noticed sometimes they're standing in the weeds, overgrowth has gotten there to, you know, till we can cut the grass. And I just feel like we're treating them like second class without helping them. And when you're looking at ADA, someone who is maybe trying to get on the bus with a wheelchair, they have nowhere to really stand
Yeah, yeah.
on their side of the street. So I just bring that.
But that is, and that is an option that they are exploring, is something that is, is less, but at least more than what's currently there.
Right. And I think when you mentioned the priority of looking and revisiting, perhaps that could be one of them. And one of my questions was, I noticed, and it's on both of your reports, C and D, you're changing the encroachment, but I, and I did not look at the report that was in August based on the size of the encroachment originally. I noticed both of them are going up to, well, one was measured five by five, so I guess that's what it was. But you're going up to sixteen feet in length and six feet in width on both of them. Is that standard? That you're looking at doing your shelters?
That's a little bit bigger than I think what we would normally do. I think in this case, because some of the grading activity, they needed, they needed to go ahead and get that encroachment in that, in those dimensions. They didn't know that until they got into the actual design.
Right, so both of the, this C and D will get the same amount. That's why I was asking.
Yes, yes, they were both here before, and now we're having to increase the encroachment.
Yeah, on both of them. Okay. That's what I had. All right.
And Mr. Cowell, I can't let this go by, especially since we have Ms. Price in the audience, her bus station at Valley View. She, I felt her vibe. And are we just going to give up on it or?
No, no, no. It is still, it is still on the list.
Vice Mayor shaking his head. What's happening, Vice Mayor?
If you were to pull the list, it's number one.
It's the Sears property. That's the crux point in the whole thing. And we have had extreme difficulty in getting any confirmation from them.
But we're not going to give up on it.
We're not going to give up.
Okay.
Yeah, and I actually have confidence that if, if and when that property changes hands and new development comes in there, we have a pretty, we should have a pretty good shot at it.
A better shot. Okay, that would be really, really good because we all know that's a concern. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry.
All right. Okay, Madam Clerk, I think we're ready to call it off.
All right. Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item D is an authorization for an encroachment permit for Greater Roanoke Transit Company Valley Metro for a bus shelter located at Blue Hills Drive at Blue Hills Circle in the right-of-way adjacent to property located at 1751 Blue Hills Drive Northeast, approximately 111 feet east of Blue Hills Circle. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Excuse me. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number four-two-seven-three-oh-oh-eight-two-one-two-three adopted August 21st, 2021, August 21st, 2023, excuse me, and allowing a bus shelter encroachment requested by the Greater Roanoke Transit Company doing business as Valley Metro into the public right-of-way adjacent to property located at 1751 Blue Hills Drive Northeast, bearing official tax map number seven-two-one-oh-one-oh-one, which bus shelter will be located within the city right-of-way upon certain terms and conditions and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Is there any discussion among members of council? Madam Clerk, please call it off.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. At this time, I'm pleased to recognize the city manager for any comments that he may have.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have two. And actually, if I could, if Matt, if you and your team wouldn't mind coming on up here. And while they're coming up here, I wanted to, I want to have them come up because I want to recognize this very hard-working group of our employees. And I want to set a little bit of context here. Obviously, you all know, our community, like so many other communities across the country, continues to wrestle with homelessness in the response to those that find themselves homeless. Just to put a little bit of context, the last count that was done nationally was somewhere in excess of 600,000 people that were experiencing homelessness in the, in the country. Everyone understands that to be a significant undercounting of what's actually going on. And many place that number more at two to three million. And if you think about it, and we're no different, kind of the churning of those folks that find themselves homeless is throughout the year. And when you figure how many people are touched by homelessness, meaning they may have a short period of homelessness and then be housed after that, some put that number as high as six million people in our country, approaching almost 2% of the total population. Our last point in time count, although we're getting ready to do a new one, put somewhere around a little over 300 individuals experiencing homelessness in our community with 70 of those unsheltered. If you follow the same sort of context that I just gave, no doubt, that's an undercount of what actually exists within our community. And the folks that are here are an integral part in that response. And I felt it important to recognize their contribution because as of, and it may have changed even by today, but as of Friday, they have helped get 203 individuals who were experiencing homelessness into housing. The city has a housing-first approach, which means we do everything we possibly can to get people into housing and then get the services they need to keep them in housing. And to get 203 individuals into housing, which I think is significantly more than what has happened in the past or what we've been able to do in the past, is because of the work that these folks are doing. And so I've asked Matt, if you wouldn't mind, Matt, introducing your team and then anything else that you want to share with the group as well.
Well, thank you all for the invitation and the recognition, and thank you, Bob, for the opportunity. So I'll just introduce our team. So we got Tamika Oliver. She's one of our intake workers with the Homeless Assistance Team. And then the next three individuals are three of our four case managers. And we've got one vacancy that we'll be filling in about two weeks. So Josh Worth is one of our case managers with the Hat Team. Tamisha Trent is our second, and John Van Balen is our third case manager. So these are the folks that do the hard work on the ground, that really do the client interactions, the intakes, the assessments, the referrals, all the work that goes into getting our clients moved into permanent housing. So we appreciate the recognition and the opportunity. So thank you all.
Yeah, if you ever have the chance to go into the lobby at the, at the building where Hat is, I don't know, nine o'clock in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning, it's a whirlwind of activity. So everybody's working very hard. When we encounter, folks in our community encounter encampments, these are the folks that get called to go out and assist in getting those individuals connected to resources. And so again, thank you all for, for your work and for your assistance. And I think you're actually going to get recognized again later today, I believe, so with the neighborhood awards and stuff too. So thank you.
Well, thank you all for your work, Matt. Thank you for your leadership.
And Bob, I would always like to mention that, you know, Roanoke City is one of the biggest safety nets in this region. And so we have a lot of pressure on us and, you know, with, with limited resources. So these guys do an excellent job. I always want to add that, especially for the public, because I don't think they realize how much goes into it and what the, what effort we put into it as far as making sure that our homeless get the attention that they need.
I appreciate that. The team actually services the region. So if there's a call in Salem or Roanoke County, it's our outreach team that will respond and get them connected to services. So they are the outreach team for, for the region.
For this region. I always like to put it out there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. My, my second item, you'll recall a month or so ago that I had mentioned that periodically I would highlight the efforts of our local United Way in, in response to its 100th anniversary. And just as a reminder, United Way is the only social service nonprofit in our community that we bring into City Hall, if you will, in that we have a workplace campaign that we do here as, in recognition of the significance of the organization. And as you all know, again, it is celebrating its 100th anniversary throughout this, throughout this year and into next year. And I just want to remind everyone that United Way of Roanoke Valley has, as their, their approach, their vision is to help 10,000 families become self-sufficient by 2030. And as you all know from previous reporting, they're about halfway to that, to that mark, so still working their way through. And I wanted to highlight just one of the activities that United Way is responsible for and the funding that goes to United Way helps, and that is the Community Resource Hub. And most of you will be familiar with that predominantly through their community health workers. So they have a collection of community health workers that they fund. Those health workers are embedded at partner sites throughout our community. And they help residents that need assistance in accessing resources, creating pathways toward improved health and, and others. And last year, there were over 7,200 contacts made in our community by those community health workers. And they do everything. They do everything from, someone may actually come into contact with them in a setting because they have some health-related issue, but they will actually work through a very extensive inventory and assessment with them. And they learn through that assessment that they are struggling with housing, that they are struggling with transportation, and a whole host of other things. And they work then to connect them to resources so that the whole person is addressed in those with that. And so again, I just will periodically come and kind of highlight something during my comments that United Way is working on in recognition of the partnership that we have with them and the work that they do within the community. Thank you. That number of contact, it was seven, 7,254, so a little over 7,200. And that was in last year.
Thank you.
Thank you. And those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Bob, all right, we're going to move now to our city attorney. He has none, nothing today. Item number eight is reports of committees. Eight-one is a report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriation of funds for various educational programs. And a report of the city manager recommending that council concur in the request. Donna Caldwell, the director of accounting, is the spokesperson. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth, federal and private grant for various educational programs, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2023-2024 school grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Any discussion among members of council? All right, Madam Clerk, I think we can call it off.
All right. Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. All right, item number 12, I'm sorry, I'm a page here. We have a presentation of the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board Annual Report. Angela S. Penn, Chair Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board. And I'm going to call on Angela to come back. Angela, thank you so much for the things you do in this city. I see your name on so many.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Good afternoon again, Mayor Lee, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to share some information about the Equity Empowerment Advisory Board. Just a very brief report, but I'd also like if members of the Equity Empowerment Advisory Board and the subcommittees would also stand to please be recognized for the service they provide. So thank you. We have Peter Watson, who is the vice chair, and Ahu Salam, who is one of the subcommittee chairs who is here today. Faison Nash was here, but he had to leave for another appointment. So these individuals volunteer their time and do a great work, so we thank them for their service. In 2023, the Equity Empowerment Board was reconstituted to a seven-person citizen advisory board. I currently serve as the chair. Peter Watson serves as the vice chair. And outgoing member, Patice Holland, serves as the secretary. Due to the reconstitution of the board, subcommittees met a little bit less frequently during 2023. And we did not have any final recommendations to council, but there are certainly some that are in the pipeline and on the way to you. We also changed and adjusted our meeting schedule for the EAB to bi-monthly. And this allows for the subcommittees more time to meet and work during that time before having to report back out to the bi-monthly meeting. We've also been rotating our meeting sites. Instead of having them here at the municipal building, we've been holding them in the libraries within the communities in hopes to get more people from the community to come out and hear. in hopes to get more people from the community to come out and hear and share their concerns with us. We've also instituted the EEAB News, which is a newsletter. And it's designed to communicate and help other subcommittees know what the other subcommittees are doing, since there are five subcommittees under the EEAB. So we find that that's a good communications tool. The other task that we have been diligently working on, that you have placed before us, is the Roanoke City Urban Renewal Apology. And so we take this matter very seriously and have been reviewing drafts that have been provided and had a very rigorous discussion about this at our November meeting. And so we will continue that work. We were glad to see and excited about the dedication of the statue for Henrietta Lacks and the changing of the name of the plaza. We were pleased to play just a very small role in helping to coordinate some listening sessions for that suggestion. And then most certainly, we are grateful for the staff liaison, Katie Hendrick, who has been working with the EAB. And she has been doing a wonderful job of helping us to stay organized, helping us to get meetings set up, really helping the subcommittee members with notes and keeping us all straight. So we really appreciate her diligence and efforts, and we are glad to be working with Katie. So thank you very much, Katie, for all your support to the EAB and the subcommittees. We appreciate you. As we move forward with the Roanoke City Urban Renewal Apology in 2024, we are looking at a timeline of hoping to have something for review to you all in spring or at the latest early summer. As we continue to evaluate the draft, we think it would be pertinent to get some key stakeholders of the community to review and act as a sounding board for what we are suggesting to you all and recommending. We want to get their feedback and make sure we're in line with those thoughts of the community. We also ask that once that recommendation comes to you, that you would allow us to share as well our recommendations on a site, the time of day, and in the manner in which the apology be presented to the community. We thank you for your selection of a new EAB member, and we have one more position to fill. So we would ask that as soon as you possibly can, appoint another member so that we can continue this great work. In addition, we will have some forthcoming recommendations in 2024. The Inclusive Culture of Subcommittee is looking at a recommendation to engage nonprofits and other businesses that are implementing diversity, equity, and inclusion strategies within their workplace. And we want them to be a part of the work that we are doing as the EAB. So we're trying to do building some coalitions and some partnerships with the business community. Neighborhood Choice is busy working, and they are evaluating various assessments and are looking to put a formal needs assessment combining data from multiple sources in order to get and assess an accurate picture of our current housing status. So they will be bringing that recommendation before you. And then Breaking the Cycle of Poverty has been in discussions and looking at a recommendation of how we can assist and engage with Roanoke City Public Schools for dedicating time to educating those who are looking to go to college and how we might help with that FAFSA and information for the CCAP program. What we don't want to see is our seniors get to that year and then they don't have that information that they needed prior to, to make some of those decisions. So we want to see if we can be of some assistance to those staff at Patrick Henry and William Fleming in terms of those guidance departments and how we may be able to engage some community members to help as well. And then we will continue our meeting schedule. The next meeting will be in January, which will be at the main library at 6:30. So we are welcoming those to come. We also extend an invitation for anyone who would like to join one of the subcommittees. This is a big, heavy lift, and many hands make light work. So we would encourage anyone who wants to be involved with the EAB and those subcommittees. There's plenty of good room at the table, so come and join us. We'd love to have you. And that concludes the report. If there are any questions, I will attempt to answer them.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Penn, for that annual report. It's very thorough. I appreciate that. One of the comments you just made about breaking the cycle of poverty and working with the schools to educate the graduating high school seniors, you know, Project Discovery, which is through TAP. I don't know if you all have reached out to them, because they are doing the same thing, so it's like a duplicate service here. And I serve on the local board with them, and I know we have been working on the FAFSA and the CCAP. So I think it would be good if we could kind of come together and just pool our resources and our time to work on this since we have service seniors from Patrick Henry as well as Fleming.
Yes, we just wanted to, we welcome that to work with Project Discovery. We just want to see, is there any other way that we can be of assistance to those individuals? And particularly trying to capture those students who are ending their sophomore year, heading into their junior year. Because timeframes change with FAFSA and deadlines, we just don't want students to get to that last year and realize that schedules and deadlines and things of that nature have been missed. So any way that we can play a role and help to expand to that.
I will mention it to the chair to get in contact with you.
Okay.
And that way you all can work together, and then we won't leave those students behind.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to say to you, Ms. Penn, I think you all are doing an excellent job. And I used to make the plea for volunteers, because it is a lot. It's, you know, even breaking it down into the subcommittees is still a lot. And I was just curious, because we did have one meeting before I came off as chair at the Merrose Library, which was a full house. Are you having that kind of success when you have them off-site at other libraries? Are you having that kind of turnout like we did that once at Merrose?
So our last meeting in November, we did not have as many people attending.
Where was it?
It was back at the.
It was back at, so I was just wondering if it was just a particular issue that was on the table or having it in various libraries across the city made a difference. So we're still trying to figure out, how can we get that community involvement? Because that's how you operate from, you know, comments and concerns that are generated from the community. So I will continue to do whatever I can to help get, you know, get to some volunteers and see if we can't communicate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all you do, and thank all of you volunteers. I've been there, done that. It's a lot of work, and we appreciate it. But like Ms. Penn said, it is good work and it's much needed, so we thank you.
All right, Angela, thank you. While you're there, I want to extend my congratulations to your son, who's at, is it West Virginia State?
Yes.
Okay, who's playing football down there. He's a graduate of Patrick Henry.
Yes.
And I was real very proud of him and the pictures and the things that he's doing. And I think that's, you know, that's something I'd like to see us even talk more about, our young men that go off to, young men and women that go off to college and participating in intercollegiate athletics. Because this, that's not an easy task, to go to school and participate in those sports. So please share with him our thoughts and that we're proud of, and let him know that we're proud of him. Thank you.
I will. Thank you so much, Mayor. I will share that with him.
Okay. Let me also recognize Mr. Peter Watson. Peter was a principal at Patrick Henry High School. I don't know if I was on school board or city council. I've been there also in a trying now. But I used to enjoy going to his school at the movie night and eating popcorn. And it was a lot of fun then, Peter. Things seem to have changed a little bit now, but I enjoyed that, but it's good to see you. And thank you for your service to a number of our students that graduated and went to Patrick Henry High School during your tenure. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, I think we're now down on a report of certain authorities, boards, and commissions, and commissions in which city council serve as liaison or appointees. Is there any comments by any members of council? Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to do this last month, but I wanted to give you all an update from Greater Roanoke Transit Company and Valley Metro. A couple of things. The Downtown Transit Center Customer Service Center is now open, and Greyhound customers are utilizing that as a waiting place. It's an information center. You can get a lot of the things that you previously had to go to the administrative offices for. You can get directly there on-site, including IDs, which is a big thing, and passes. They're also getting a lot of inquiries about Amtrak schedules. So there's a nice cross-section of that taking place. And that is currently staffed, I think, from 7:30 to 4:30 every day. Also, Metro Flex is just around the corner. Final factors are being considered for that, including the different kinds of offerings that will be available through Metro Flex, engaging the business community as to availability for designated stops at places of employment, which is also good. And we're looking at early to mid at the latest January for a launch for that. And again, that will extend, it'll be on-demand as well as scheduled. And it will extend transit hours to 12:15 in the morning, Monday through Saturday, and expand Sunday service availability from 9:00 to 6:00. So that's a big boost in service. It's something that citizens have been asking for, for a long time. So this is the opportunity for citizens to use it, because the goal is for this not to be only a pilot, but to become eventually part of our fixed drought system.
That's great. Thank you.
All good stuff.
All right, anybody else? All right, thank you so much then. All right, we'll move on then to item number nine, and this unfinished business we have none. Item number 10 is introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. And item 10-1 is a resolution renaming the Gainesboro Library Community Room. And I don't know who's, well, we got a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution renaming the community room at the Gainesboro Branch Library to Carla Lewis Community Room.
There?
That's it.
That's great. Not showing, I mean, that's good. I just thought there was more to that. But all right, council members, any thoughts or discussions?
And Mayor, just as a reminder, I know you all know this, but just for anyone that's watching or paying attention to it. So this is, as we have done in other cases, we're asking for the resolution today. We will coordinate with the family for an event on-site sometime later in the spring, I think is what we're targeting and stuff. So there'll be more to come. This is just to take care of the official part of it as well.
Great. I'd like for somebody from the library to come up and just introduce those members of librarians who are here. And librarians, it's a real special place for me. Back 50 years ago, when I was in college, playing football, we thought it was punishment when you had to go to the library. Coach said, okay, I want you to go to the library tonight. Man, that is punishment. It didn't get any rougher than that. But things have changed over 50 years, and I appreciate all that you all are doing.
Oh, yes, the football folks at PH enjoy coming over to Raleigh Court. I can tell you that. So my name is Nathan Flincham. I'm one of the senior managers at the libraries. And we have Charles C. Parker, another senior manager, Megan Mizak, who's the current manager at the Gainesboro Library, Lisa Bannister, and Amber Lowry. So all of our senior managers here wanted to come. So many of us got the chance to work with Mrs. Lewis when she was here. And, you know, the collaboration and relationship that we have with the Gainesboro community would not be the same if it wasn't for the work that Mrs. Lewis put in. So we're excited about getting, being able to do something in a, you know, in a couple of months in the new year to celebrate this. We think it's great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all for what you do at the libraries. Thank you so much.
Mr. Bear, I would like to make a comment if I could. I just want to say, I think this is well-deserving for Carla. I recall when she was the librarian over at Gainesboro for all those years. And I'm glad we are doing something to recognize her tenure there and her hard work by renaming or naming the community room after her. Yes, indeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we call a roll on this?
Yes, we can. Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes, so we have the Carla Lewis Community Room. Thank you. All right, the next item is a big one. A resolution approving a half-day on December 22nd, 2023, as additional holiday leave for all city employees in recognition of outstanding service throughout the year. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Do an edit, you can vote on that. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph, please?
I can, but who was that second? Any one of them? Okay. All right, the resolution. A resolution closing certain city offices on Friday, December 22nd, 2023, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, and providing for additional holiday leave to all city employees.
All right, any discussion, members of council?
I was going to ask Mr. Cal, how would that affect our public work, because those guys work 24/7.
Right, we'll have, obviously, public safety will still be working as the normal schedule would. We'll have, the good thing is, this year, with it being on a Friday, that is our light schedule for solid waste, so there won't be any disruption, or very few folks that have to continue work. But there'll be, there'll be folks working throughout the weekend.
But they'll get some other day off or some other time, compensated some other.
Yeah, yes, so the compensation is, they'll all get compensated for the holiday pay. They'll just, it'll go into their holiday bank that they'll use at a later point in time. And we will also be closed, the libraries will be closed actually on Saturday, because obviously, closed on Monday. It doesn't make much sense to close half-day and stuff with this. I didn't even make one, one make sure, I wanted to make clarification. So it says we're closing at 1:00.
Yes.
We're actually, are we closing at 1:00? I thought we were closing at noon.
I thought it was noon, but you get an hour paid lunch.
Got it.
So this is why we always say 1:00, so it's 4 hours.
So everybody knows, so, and we'll be pushing information out to the public. So all of the city buildings will close at noon on Friday.
They'll take lunch and they won't come back.
That's right.
So nice.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, we ready to call a roll?
Yes, sir, we are. Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye, aye, aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you all. All right, item number 11, motion and miscellaneous business, or any inquiries or comments by the mayor or members of city council? Are there any?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Kind of the flip side of what we were celebrating earlier about housing 200 people who were previously homeless. This Thursday at 11:00 is the annual homeless memorial service for those who have experienced homelessness this past year who have died. It's a very moving service, so that's at Green Memorial Church right across the way at 11:00 on Thursday.
All right, thank you. Ms. Patrick, you're leaving. I want you to have a few words. You go ahead then. Okay. All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Ms. Pretty.
I've got two things. Bob, sorry to put you on the spot. On the consent agenda, we had the budget calendar.
Yes.
Could you provide just a little more insight about what we might expect at each of those work sessions? I know it's kind of always an ongoing thought, but just for planning.
The easiest one, I can provide the most clarity at, is what Brent actually alluded to earlier. So at your January, well, let me. This ultimately culminates to a presentation of a proposed budget to you all in the spring. In between, what we have typically done is, there's a lot of work going on, obviously, by staff, and we will come each month with a briefing. And so, the first briefing traditionally in January has been the presentation from the real estate assessment group to talk about real estate and real estate values, and that will certainly still be the case. That'll be at your January 2nd meeting in the afternoon. What we're adding to that is a broader, as Brent mentioned, a bigger discussion of revenue. It's always just focused on real estate, so we're going to expand that conversation to include projections of other revenue sources. And then, after that, it gets a little bit murkier, so I'll just tell you kind of the topics as to how they'll unfold. So, one of those briefings will certainly center around CIP, our capital program, and as you all know from the retreat, because of increasing costs associated with inflation and borrowing costs, we already know we're going to have to rework the, rework the capital program. So, that, that'll be the, obviously, the majority, that conversation with it. And we'll likely have some conversation regarding outside agencies, and we'll likely have some conversation associated around, obviously, supplemental requests. Those supplemental requests are for new, new things, new services, new initiatives, and so on. We're, the, the reason why we don't have those laid out yet is we're actually kind of reworking how we want to do those briefings. So, the January one, I know, we got that one pretty well set, and we're going to expand the revenue. But those topics will be what we end up covering, and of course, at the end of that, you all then have your work plan, or your work sessions, where once we've presented the budget, then you have discussion, and then, of course, the public hearing associated with those. So, that's generally kind of the topics of those. I will say, for anyone that's watching, so what will happen is, the, the presentations, of course, will be to you all prior to, to that meeting. Presentations will all be posted up online, as they have been every year, so that folks can view those presentations. Of course, your recordings are available as we work our way through. So, all of that information that we present at the briefings are available, and the briefings themselves are available also. At the end, when we do the, when we do the presentation of the budget proposal, that will be available both online as well as distributed out through the library, so folks have access to the hard copy as well as to the, the digital copy. Again, that'll be out in kind of April timeframe as, as we get to that point. But that generally is how those, those will flow. That calendar has a lot more information attached to it, but those are, there's a, again, there's a lot of things going on kind of behind the scenes. We will also reserve the right that those are your first meetings. If things are getting really complicated behind the scenes, we may have to add to that as we come forward also. So, we'll certainly give you ample warning that we may have to take more than one meeting to do those.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, just have one other comment. Yeah, thank you. This meeting is our last meeting of the year. It has been my first year on council. I want to thank the city attorney, the city manager, especially the city clerk's office, and everyone on this council for putting up with me for the entire year, and I look forward to another one. I've, I've noticed at the meetings when I'm not here that y'all get out a lot earlier, but.
And that way for the new year.
And I appreciate serving, and I look forward to the next one.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Pretty. Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Just want to, just comment back on what Councilmember Pretty was saying about the budget. Now, during that time you mentioned, Bob, will there be any briefings dealing with services that the city offers if there's going to be a reduction in services? Will you be bringing that before the council?
Yeah, absolutely. We have, yes, if we have, yeah, if we had any kind of change in, in services, obviously, your supplementals are folks that ultimately are going to be, that will be bringing forward as requests to add to services. Obviously, yes, if we have to pull back on any services, we'll certainly bring those forward.
Or programs, I guess, maybe I'm, I'm thinking of like recreation programs.
Yep.
Will you be, we'll know as a council where that is.
Yes.
And if we have any suggestions or whatever, we'll have an opportunity to present.
You know, at this, at this point, I don't anticipate, unless there's something catastrophic, any reduction in services. I, I do think, as we have shared with the directors, our ability to add to services, our ability to do any kind of outside agency funding, and, and those kinds of things are what's going to be constrained this year in order to meet our compensation objectives.
Or if, for say, for instance, if we wanted to see an increase in certain services to be provided, we'll be able to talk about it at that, at that time when we present.
Yeah, some of that, you've already, you all have already shared that with us at the retreat, which is really the purpose of the, the retreat, because remember, the idea is that with the retreat, you all are providing us kind of your priorities and your high-level items, then, then we're taking ultimately that information and using it to craft the, the budget proposal. Along the way, there are some significant things we need to talk about, like the capital program. But it is also quite possible, at the end of that process, that when we present the proposed budget to you all, there'll be other things that you want to, in effect trade. Basically, there are things that perhaps we're recommending to fund more of that you don't want to do, and/or those things that are not funded. I mean, again, hopefully, you know, because you've shared a lot of that with us in your retreats, we'll capture most of those in the, in the proposals, and we'll seek that. And some of those, we'll be seeking clarification along the way as we go.
Okay, because there are some that I think, and that's why I was asking for the appropriate time, because I would like to see an increase in some of the programs in, in, in a department. That's why I was asking.
Yeah.
But I'll get back with you. I don't want to wait till the budget is put together and then say, what about an increase?
Yeah, and I guess, I guess my initial reaction is that is, that is what the retreat is for. I mean, that is, that is the point.
We went over, but it didn't specifically go into the details on that, so I'd just like to put that out there.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
And then, again, and I'll be, and that is a piece I didn't include in that calendar, is along the way, as, especially as we get to the point at which we're formulating what we're going to propose as the budget, we'll be having meetings, two council members at a time also, as we work our way through, so that we can kind of do one sort of last check on the submission of the, of the presentation of the budget. So, what we always try to, y'all know this from having gone through this, what we always try to avoid is, you know, you're, you're giving us, the administration, the staff, direction. We're building the budget and sending it to you for reaction and adjustment, what we're, and we're looking for clarification along the way. We're not, we're not spending the next six months jointly building the budget.
Right.
That, that, so, yeah, but we'll, we'll, there'll be plenty of opportunities along that, that point along the way and stuff.
All right. There'll be plenty of opportunity. Let's keep the Christmas spirit and get away from budgets right now.
All right.
Budgets are important at Christmas, don't you say?
It has its place.
All right. Vacances on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council, none. And so, council will be in recess until our 7:00, 7:00 PM meeting. And there's a 6:00 event downstairs with the neighborhoods.
Yeah, for the neighborhood award nominees.